Cooler weather is just around the corner, but while the warm weather is still here, take advantage of our $49 total home comfort checkup from Premier Heating and Air. Premier Heating and Air is a locally owned and operated company. Log on to premierishere.com and experience a premier difference today.
My name is Mitchell Lee Whittington. I live at 108 Coney Street, Dublin, Georgia. I am retired from Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And the reason why I know, and not believe, but I know that I am the best candidate, is because I come from the construction world. And if, I don't know if we can see it, but if you look at my fingernails, I was working with some of my farm animals today. So I got dirt under my fingernails. I am the guy that get out, matter of fact, the storm, when he hit Helena, there was two officers that night with dark skin right down the street from where we're standing. I actually cleared out with my tractor. If there's problems at the school system, and it's hard to believe that city council didn't know that that was already happening, so the people that's already there that's wanting to be reelected, they're already part of the problem. Don't put back in the same problem and think the problem's gonna fix itself. You're gonna have to have new blood, people in there like myself that's gonna make tough decisions, but it's going to be for the majority of the city of Dublin. Do I sin? Yes. But am I Christian? Most definitely. I try to hold myself to a higher standard than most. I'm fortunate enough at this point that I'm not even physically supposed to be here in this world. I'm supposed to be a spirit right now. And I could show the scar on the side of my head, but I don't know if that's too graphic. All I have left is my dogs, me, and to work for the citizens of Dublin. We have all kinds of safety issues with power lines and communication cables laying all over the place. This needs to be addressed with a committee to make AT&amp;T, Comcast, and whoever else, Georgia Power, make these repairs. Because if not, there's a chance that a child could go up, grab a communication line that might be energized by secondaries, and actually lose their life. Another thing we need to really address is the shootings. And how do we correct it? It's more of a culture thing than it is anything else. When the father is absent, you have an issue. And if you look at the way social media's going right now, these are all the things that are being brung up. I know how to address them, because I spent 20 years in California having to deal with the same DEI issues that we have and starting to grow here in Georgia. We need to stop them before they get to be a cancer. I'm more than glad and willing to let you have my phone number. You can call me anytime, day or night. I will drop whatever I'm doing, and I will come help you, even if it's at your own house. I think we need to address parking. I notice that there's some businesses that are having issues as far as getting clients to come in and pay for the business. So I see that as an issue. And another issue that's been happening is I go around to a lot of different breakfast places. And I'm listening to a lot of the people that live in the county, that own businesses in the city of Dublin, and they don't have a vote. They don't have a city council member that represents them, because they live in the county. I'm here to represent everybody. The county, the people have businesses here, because I know of two businesses already left the city of Dublin. We need to bring and keep the businesses here. I've seen too many corporate businesses being brung in here. Mr. Dunk, Scott Beasley, I've been doing tire work with him for 35, 40 years. And I've sent my sons by, my dad by, and he bills me on the account. Where are they working with him trying to keep his business afloat? They're not. But they don't mind putting a brand-new shiny piece of pearl, or glitter, or whatever you want to call it, out in several locations. And take and get rid of the people that sit at the same dinner table that we sit at. This needs to be all corrected. Only one person that can truly represent the blue-collar guy, the white-collar guy, and anybody of any other difference. At that location right there, I'm already leaving you my phone number. I'm telling you exactly where I live. Anybody's welcome to call, come by, because when I get here, I will represent you. I will be your friend, or at least do everything I can to be a partner to help you in any situation you need. The school system is a big thing, but there's bigger situation with the city. If this city fails, the whole county's gonna have to bail us out. Do we really want to put that burden on the county? No. Nobody wants to have to pay extra taxes. We gotta figure it, make some big cuts right off the front, because there's some things that need to be addressed. We need to quit wasteful spending. And if you notice, look at the shirt. I got two representations, and everybody should know what blue, white, and red means. But it also means something else. And this is, for me, from a biblical standpoint of view. The blue represents Democrat. The red represents Republican. And this white represents Jesus Christ. They're already having early votes. So get out now and vote, so you beat the crowd on November the 4th. I'll be out and about, which I've already been out and about in the community. But right now, you need to get out, go ahead and make this less of an issue later on the 4th. Go ahead and take care of it on a lunch break, or a second break. And if you happen to own a business, or you don't work and you stay at home, come by in the afternoon and go vote. Your vote is going to count. Every one vote, every little vote, is going to count. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And vote for Mitchell Lee Whittington, the cowboy.
Welcome to our TV 35 Political Forum. Tonight, we will hear from our candidates for Dublin City Council at large and for Dublin City School Board at large. I want to say thank you to all of our candidates for participating. I want to share some brief instructions for tonight. There will not be questions from the audience tonight. I would ask that our candidates not speak out of turn. Please don't interrupt the moderator or your opponent. And the purpose for our forum tonight is to educate voters on your positions. So we are going to have opening statements in just a minute, but I think before we get started, we're gonna open with a word of prayer, if you would bow and pray with me. Father, we love you. We thank you for each and every new day of life that you give us, and Lord, for the opportunities, the blessings that you just pour out on us each and every day, and enable us to serve you, to serve in this community, to love one another, as you've so freely given that love to us. And I pray that as we go throughout our forum tonight, that our candidates, Lord, would speak in a manner that'll be pleasing to you, that you'll give them wisdom and guidance to do the work that you have planned for them. And we ask all these things in the wonderful name of Christ. Amen. So I'm going to start tonight with Mr. Brandon Chain. And Mr. Chain, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Brandon Chain. I'm a native of Dublin, Georgia. At the age of 12, I started my entrepreneurial career right here in Dublin, Georgia, at Dublin Middle School. I later graduated from Dublin High School as an honor graduate in 2012. I continued my education at Georgia State University and graduated there with a bachelor's in psychology in 2017. Currently, I'm the proud owner of B Money Services, which is a host of services from handyman work to electronic work to transport work. I'm eager to serve as a city councilman, because I feel like there's a need for people who will listen, be there for the citizens, all citizens, and not just one set of citizens.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. John Hall, two minutes for your opening statement.
My name is John Hall. I'm a CPA, and I've been down here in Dublin for 20 years. Originally from Atlanta, went to Valdosta State. And my family was very influential in Dublin around the turn of the century. It was Frank Quarker was my grandmother's father. I came to Dublin because of the memory of my grandmother. That's it. So as far as me, and I've had my own business for 29 years, and I work with people all the time, and I've been very successful. I hope to be successful on the city council and make Dublin a better place.
Thank you, sir. We're going to start, our first question for tonight, I'll start with you, Mr. Hall. Would you give us in two to three minutes, your current state of the community address? So if you were giving a state of the community address, what would your two to three minutes sound like?
Well, here it goes. This is the state of the community right now. After meeting so many people, and walking around and talking to business owners and individuals. A couple of years ago, there was a sewer issue right down from City Hall. And it'd been going on for 20 years. And I was walking my dogs, and I had to step over raw sewage and toilet paper in the street. And I thought, what is this? And so I met with neighbors and got together, came to city council and got that fixed. There's a lot of issues in Dublin. You know, there's empty buildings downtown. There's, the business people are not happy. That's the main thing. Everybody that I've talked to, nobody said, oh, they're doing a great job, anything like that. So as far as the state of the community, I know there's a crime issue, but I think it's gotten better. My wife and I live across the street at the Captain Hardy Smith house. And even up to about a year ago, we used to hear rat-a-tat-tat and pop-pop-pop all the time, guns going off. And I know the city put in these devices that capture the gunshots and everything. It's been real quiet at our house. There are other issues with crime. We had our, her mountain bike got stolen. I had a ladder stolen out of my yard. So there is some crime around here and homelessness. We had a lady sleeping behind the dumpster behind the house one time. And there's a lady that goes around every morning, about 5:00 in the morning, and she's on her bicycle, she's going through the dumpsters in Dublin, Georgia. So there's different things. And we went to the South Side, okay, and I heard what their community said. You know, they're mostly black folks down there and everything. And, you know, just hearing what their concerns were and everything. If I'm on the city council, I'm gonna listen to everybody. There's two people that are homeless. They're right down on Bellevue, and I just walked up to them and said hello, you know, what are you doing? They're homeless, they're from Augusta, Georgia. And they're sleeping out in the environment. And that's not right. So, you know, as far as the business environment, what's going on, I think Dublin's on the cusp of some really tremendous growth. You know, you've got the I-16 corridor. Have y'all seen what's going on in Savannah? A lot of growth and everything. Pooler is just like Alpharetta. My wife used to live up there. But as far as what's going on in Dublin, I see the potential to, you know, have growth. But you can't have Wild West growth. And I'm not sure if the city council's doing a great job on that. You know, if I get on city council, you know, I'm a business guy. I understand stuff. And, you know, I'll do my best to steer Dublin in the right direction. We don't want to be Alpharetta. We don't want to be Pooler. So, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chain, if you would, two to three minutes, give me your state of the community.
My state of the community is we're losing the youth to a lot of gangs and violence. A lot of the youth I grew up with, I've seen them come from shelter households, the same as mine, bringing up, where two-parent households, some kind of way they end up in the streets. I believe that's a problem for our city, because we can provide more resources for everyone in the city. Without the youth, we're not gonna have a pretty bright future, because they're the future of our city. And I'm a youth myself, I feel like I could be a role model for those youth. Continue to grow, to come out of the gangs, to find, to show them there's another way to live more than in the streets.
Anything you want to add to that?
I'm good.
October is Rocktober here at Dublin Nissan. With savings up to $7,500, it's time to rock and roll in a new Rock Creek Pathfinder. If a Murano is more of your taste, we can save you up to $8,000. So come check out our great selection and pick one out. And with the only V6 in its class and a great selection, Dublin Nissan has the frontier for you. We've got J.D. Powers Number One Rated Brand, and we stacked them deep so we can sell them cheap. So now's the time to get to Dublin Nissan. And come see the Heisman, only at Dublin Nissan.
Love &amp; Insurance, built on family values that stand the test of time. Business, home, auto. LoveAndInsurance.com, 478-272-6731. Stop by 510 Bellevue Avenue in Dublin. Love &amp; Insurance, built on family values.
Hi, this is Meg Greer-Evans with Middle Georgia Estate Planning. And while we're thinking about Alzheimer's Awareness Month, I just want to encourage you or your family member to take a look at your estate plan, maybe pull your will out that you made 20 years ago. Make sure you've got an updated Power of Attorney and Healthcare Directive, so that your loved ones can properly follow your wishes to take care of you. If you need help with any of that, we'd be glad to help you. You can give us a call at 478-272-2885.
I will start with you on our next question. If you would finish this sentence for me. What Dublin really needs most is, and you finish that sentence.
What Dublin really needs is more things for the youth. I'm avid on the youth, at the end of the day. Like I say, they're our future. A lot of the older people here feel like our youth are getting into things they shouldn't be getting into, and that's probably why, because they're bored or have idle time to get into things.
Okay. Mr. Hall, what Dublin really needs most is?
Good leadership. I think they've done a pretty good job on some things. But I gotta tell you, when I decided to run for council, they tried to rebrand Dublin and remove the Shamrock. And that was a terrible business decision. It cost the city over $70,000. I know there's different aspects, you can take a look at that. But I go back to the sewer thing. It was 20 years it has sat there like that. And the only reason I found out about it is because of what I said. But anyway, repeat the question again.
What Dublin really needs most.
Okay. Another aspect of this is, right now Dublin needs a positive image. The school board situation means that everybody knows that Dublin's got a problem. And being a CPA, a financial professional on the city council, I feel like that'll give people a good feeling for management of the city's business. Like I said, I'm a businessman. I work with people that make a lot of money, and some people, I used to do the cashier at Piggly Wiggly's tax return for $25. But anyway, that's about it.
Okay, I'm gonna start with you on this next question. And you guys kind of hit around this a little bit, but what do you think is the single biggest issue facing our city? And then how would you address that issue?
Like I said, the I-16 corridor. We're sitting here ready for growth, and you can already see it happening. We've got in-market, we've got jacks came here, my wife's favorite is Hobby Lobby. And that's a sign. That's a sign that people want to bring their businesses here and growth. So, repeat the question again.
The biggest issue facing our city and how you will address it.
Okay, all right, sorry. That is the biggest issue. And that is the future development of Dublin. I want to see Dublin grow. I want to see all these buildings downtown full. I want to see people on the, you ever been to Roswell? You go to the little marketplace, the place is busy, it's got people, interaction, everything. Money is what's gonna make this town better. Not to make somebody rich, but you've got to have money flow, and that flows to everybody. So if we can get the economy here in Dublin, push it forward. But again, we don't want to be an Alpharetta or a Pooler. If y'all have ever been down there, it's a mess down there. We want controlled development, but we want it so that it benefits everybody. And I'll tell you one last thing. I know a personal friend of mine, and he moved down to Dublin. You know why he moved here? He said that he looked at some kind of a survey and property values and everything like that, and he chose Dublin. He's the perfect example of why people would want to come here. That's what we want. We don't want people read about Dublin, Georgia, oh, their school system's in $16 million. No, we need a better image for Dublin.
Mr. Chain, what do you feel is the biggest issue facing our city, and how will you address this issue?
Lack of awareness of existing resources, and resources not being distributed equitably across the whole city. How would I address it? I would go out and ask the city, I would actually go to the certain communities, instead of thinking about people on the South Side, what they, what we think they want. I want to go to those communities and ask them what they want. I want to go to the communities in downtown, ask them what they need. At the end of the day, it's not about what the councilman wants done in the city, it's about what the community needs for the city.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask both of you gentlemen, and I want you to listen to me real close here, because I want you to choose one of these issues and discuss this. I'm gonna give it to you twice. Between transportation, workforce, education, childcare, or housing, which of these is the most important to you and why? Again, transportation, workforce, education, childcare, or housing? And I will start with you. Mr. Chain, these seem to be the topics that come up the most in the meetings that I'm around. And so which one of those issues are most important to you? I'll let you look right there at the paper, and you just tell me which one is most important to you.
I would say education, in my opinion. Why? Because, like I say, education is long, is lifelong, is something that can be built on. At the end of the day, with more education, you can build on transportation, workforce, and childcare, because somebody could create a job at the end of the day, they're covering up with education.
Mr. Hall?
Okay, I believe workforce is the main one here. I'll back up a little bit on education. I talked to a neighbor of mine yesterday, and he was talking about businesses, and this will be for the chamber, too. He was talking about businesses coming here. And he said that a lot of businesses look at Dublin, and then they see the education situation, and they say, nope. So that is another issue. But I think the workforce is the most important one. How many people we got down here that don't have jobs? Let's put them to work, you know? You got businesses here. Again, I'm the economic guy here, the accountant, but if you bring in businesses, they're gonna have to hire people, people get employed, and it just makes a better, healthy economy.
Hi, I'm Lily Rose Barton, and I have been coming to Bass for years. I had to come for knee replacement recovery. I had a bad back, I came for that. But this last stint was because I had SI joint fusion, and my right leg was very weak, muscles were weak, but they have really built me up. And it has really helped all of them. Erica, Whitney, Chuck, they all are just so good at encouraging you to do what you can, but don't overdo. Take it slow and easy. And taking it slow and easy has got me where I am today. From the front door to the back, they're all just very, very nice and helpful. And I appreciate all of them so much. I just can't express with words what they mean to me. But I do hope they know that I appreciate everything they've done for me through the years, not just since January, when I started with this one. Chuck was just took me in, I brought the doctor's report from that, and he put it into the computer. He studied what needed to be done. He instructed me how to do it. He was right there every step of the way that first day. Not only do I do this, but when I get in the anti-gravity walking, at first, yes, I was scared, because I hadn't been able to walk that much. But I have come a long ways. So it's just been such a blessing to have Bass, to be able to come and do this therapy with them. And they're just so good to all of their patients. But I feel like they've been especially good to me, and I do appreciate them. I would highly suggest that if your doctor were to suggest therapy for you, please tell them Bass in Dublin, Georgia is where you want to go. Any of them here would just be happy to work with you and get you back on your feet and able to do things that you were not able to do before coming to Bass Therapy.
Hometown Supply is welcoming in spring with a bigger and better selection of zero-turn mowers, blowers, string trimmers, and a complete line of power tools for the yard.
Hometown Supply has all of your lawn and garden equipment, from zero-turn mowers to string trimmers and blowers. We carry all major parts and offer service and repair, so come see us at Hometown Supply.
And remember, Hometown Supply has a large selection of new and used appliances.
And remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
Mr. Hall, is there a specific accomplishment or initiative that you would like to see completed during your term if elected? Is there anything specific?
How much time you got?
One to two minutes, if you can.
The first thing I would like to see for Dublin is a museum. We don't have a museum anymore, okay? That's one. Another one is the parks. You look at Stubbs Park where I live, it's like an unfinished construction site. It's embarrassing to drive by there and see what looks like something that's just abandoned. And speaking of parks, the River Park. I don't know if any of y'all have ever been down to the River Park, but it's abandoned. They need to cut, I mean, if I get on city council, I want to see these projects that they come up with, finish them. It's like, start something, and we don't have any money. Well, did you do diligence? Did you figure out what it's gonna take to get this done? Are you just out there placating the masses, saying that, oh, we're gonna do this, and then you start it, and you just kind of, you know, dissipate. The River Walk Park is beautiful, but it's so grown up, you can't even see the river. See, I go all over town, looking at different places and everything, and I just got this image of Dublin. And I just feel that things are not getting done. The bricks over here in Madison Street, that's what I want to see for Dublin. That is awesome. They just, they've almost got the bricks going all the way down. You go to Savannah, and you see the old cobblestones and everything. Well, Dublin's got this beautiful now Madison Street. That's what I want to see done for all of Dublin.
Mr. Chain, is there any specific accomplishment or initiative you would like to see if elected?
If elected, also, I want to see more, something for the youth, in a, on a higher schedule, on a full-time schedule. As in YMCA or Boys and Girls Club, or something like that, that it can hold the whole city as, city as a whole, and hold the youth as a conjunctive situation. So, and...
Okay. I'm gonna start with you on this next one, Mr. Chain. Share your opinions on SPOLOST. Any of the T-SPOLOST, E-SPOLOST, just what are your thoughts on SPOLOST?
I don't have enough information to answer that question.
Mr. Hall, any comments on your feelings towards SPOLOST?
Yes, okay. We all know the school board's a mess, and they're, I don't know what the number is, 16 million, 12 million, 50 billion, I don't know what they're, that's going on. And the majority of the opinion that I get from people, and this is from reading the paper, too, is they say, no, no more money for you, okay? Now, I believe this is where... Now, I believe this is where a penny gets added to our sales tax. Okay? And I think that the actual election's not coming up, not this year, but the following year. I think there's a referendum on the ballot this year, will you support it or something like that? But, you know, I sit over here, and I get my property tax bill, and it's like, you know, what up, 25%? And we, I know we've kind of beaten that horse to death, but the idea of handing another penny over to the school system until they get themselves fixed, I'm against it.
And now we will have time for our closing statements, and I will start with you, Mr. Chain. You have two minutes.
I have already introduced myself in my opening statement. I have answered all the questions asked of me to the best of my knowledge. I am convinced that Dublin needs a leader with enthusiasm, dedication, and the curiosity to inquire about critical issues and the patience to listen to diverse perspectives, and the strong work ethics necessary to research, which would enable me to make informed decisions. So let me ask you now, do you want a city councilman who is willing to listen and act on your needs? Do you want a city councilman who will not bring their own self-interest into governing the city? Do you want a city councilman with, who only interest is to make it, make sure the city continue to strive and stay safe? Finally, I ask you, are you prepared to elect a leader that will do this? If so, you will go out and vote Brandon Chain to help make a needed change. It's all about our city, make, continue growth, safety, and for, and to make the city grow for our community, not just me.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, two minutes for your closing statement.
Okay. I'm reminded, I actually wrote this down, I wanted to get it out to folks, that I used to teach over here, it was a Coney Fowl Line, it used to, I can't remember what it used to be. Anyway, and there was a, there was a situation, I was doing after-school tutoring, and the copy machine was broke, and nobody was getting it fixed. This went on for weeks and everything. Anyway, I went to the president of the school, and I got it fixed. And the folks that were managing that part of the school were upset with me, because I went outside of protocol. Now, I'm not saying I'm going to do something wrong in the city council, but I'm gonna be thinking outside of the box, and I think that's very important. Again, back to the reason why I first started wanting to run, was what the current administration did regarding the Shamrock. That struck me personally, growing up as a child, seeing my grandmother's picture. Coming from Dublin was very special to me. I can promise you that something like that will never happen if I'm up here on city council. Now, speaking of my grandmother, this is a picture from 1910, and this is Griffin Lovett's house currently. But I believe that's my grandmother, she was born in 1909. I know you can't see this, but there's a lady holding a baby. I'm pretty sure that's my grandmother. And I want to make my grandmother proud, I want to make my great-grandfather proud of doing for Dublin, because I love this town. The last thing I'll say, my goal for city council is to turn that frown into a smile. Thank you.
Now's the time to get a great deal on the number one selling compact tractor in the U.S. Professional-grade mowers, durable sidekick utility vehicles, and versatile compact tractors. It's the equipment you need to take care of your land. Right now, bring home select Kodo equipment with 0% financing available, or save up to $3,500.
Products you can count on, a name you can trust, that's Midstate Tractor and Equipment.
Hi, it's Stephanie again at Shermont Honda Kawasaki, and I wanted to show you an adrenaline rush. We have the brand-new Kawasaki Terex H2, 250 horsepower, supercharged, fastest side-by-side on the market. This unit has a digital speedometer, five-point harness for safety, a bed for storage, and then we also have the Garmin Tread App, that you can download your favorite music and display it on the dashboard. Come in and see us today at Shermont Honda Kawasaki CF Moto, 106 Savannah Avenue, East Dublin, Georgia.